One of them's real big, but he's really nice. The other one bites and growls.
And you're...
I'm in my nightgown out there to go see what's running. And my little dog, my younger dog, he's not little, was scared by him. And he went running back in the house, so I shut the deck door.
Oh.
Of course, he jumps up and locks it. I hadn't gone out my front door yet, and it was already locked. I was in my nightgown, no cellphone, no keys, nothing, barefooted.
Oh, gosh.
Hey, Tina. How are you doing?
People were working over at, um, across the street. And I went over there and asked if somebody could help me. Finally.
I just texted you.
Oh, they got in a little window.
Broke in?
Yeah.
Tina.
How's it going?
It's going well.
Yeah.
And you?
Good. Oh, I'm gonna turn my fan off. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
All right, should we get started?
I'm ready.
That's gonna be a pretty short one.
Oh, yes, I am.
Uh, Josh, could I get the sign-in sheet from back there, please?
Oh.
Were you in Hawaii?
Mm-hmm.
When did you get that?
Monday.
Were you in Hawaii?
Yeah.
Did you have one at the time?
We did.
Lonnie, although, had a terrible trip.
Oh.
He had a bad surf accident the day after Christmas.
Was Lonnie got something to say?
And then he got his stitches all removed and got the flu really bad. And he's still, I mean, today is the first day like he's moving around. Yeah.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started.
Lon, do you have a pen? You can come.
Welcome. Uh, this is the normal business meeting of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District, January 10th, 2019. Let the record reflect that, um, directors Kramer, Norris, French, and Sexton are in attendance. Director Brown has an excused absence. Can I hear a motion from the board to accept the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes, I guess.
Somebody said aye, huh? Sorry about that.
Do I hear ayes from the...
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we've got it. Very good. Um, I don't have any sign-ups from citizens present on agenda or non-agenda items. Is there anyone that was unable to sign up that would like to speak? Very well. Um, with that, let's go ahead and hear from our unfinished business, from our committee meetings, from our committees. Do we have anything from the sewer committee?
A little bit. Um, we canceled our normal meeting tonight, and we have pushed it to January 31st. Um, I think, um, I'll go back a month and remind people. So, at the December meeting, we discussed, we received our packet that we had requested from Civil West, went over it, um, and Steve Brown, Kent, and myself were there. Um, and our feeling is, is that at, um, the next step for Devils Lake Water Improvement District Board of Directors is to decide what we want to do from here on out. And so, um, whether that is continuing the sewer committee, to move into the, um, developing a sewer district phase, or ending our involvement as the Devils Lake Water Improvement District and maybe being private citizens on a committee that moves forward with that, um, that's in a nutshell where I think, um, we need to decide what we want to do. Brian sent an email out, um, to the sewer committee, basically outlining that, and then also included David Hawker, who is a previous, um, city manager for Lincoln City, who was involved, um, before he retired from that position in the, uh, some of the financial options for that. And so, Brian invited him to come to the meeting. And, um, I believe in reading, um, he was available, he thought, to be there on the 31st. So, um, I will definitely attend that meeting. Um, just reading over this email to think, see if I'm missing anything else.
My, my take from that meeting was that the committee's going to get together, discuss what they would like to do, and whether they come to the board, um, with a proposal to continue our involvement with that or not. And then the boards will make a decision based on, on that at that time. Is that correct?
Yeah. Whether it's that way or the opposite way, um, I, I think, though, it makes sense to me to have the sewer committee make a recommendation to the board because that's the way that our...
Bylaws.
Bylaws, thank you. Were written up. So, um, I think that that will probably happen at the February meeting, um, if this meeting on the 31st continues to go through. I, I don't think it's been confirmed 100%, but...
Very good.
For the most part. So, that's what I have for that.
Thanks, Tina.
Mm-hmm.
Um, special projects, Bill?
Uh, we don't have anything right now, but just to do a little follow-up, uh, we did get the signs that were, we were waiting for, and they're up, posted.
Good.
How many signs did we get, by the way?
Five, or four? Four.
Yeah, I saw that they were up at the, at the compressor. I was, I kinda thought they would be a little bigger, but I, I guess I was thinking they'd be as big as the other sign myself, but I don't know. It was money? Is that it? You're going like this, money? Is that...
I don't know if there was really a specific size that was, that we had talked about.
Right.
So, that was just a general size.
Okay.
Uh, everything else is, is going as planned. I haven't talked to the sheriff's office yet about a date for June for the boat safety, but the road cleanup is still on, so that's all we're working on right now, other than, um, the Airstream units getting, uh, cleaned and serviced. It's just basically tightening a few bolts in the frame, power washing it, getting the scum off of it. But seem to be operating fine, so we're gonna put it back in hopefully next month up at Knowles.
Okay. Great. Very good. All right, save our shoreline and water quality monitoring committee.
All right. We finally met this afternoon at what I had on the agenda was OLCC, but I think...
That sounds more fun.
I think Apple changed that. It was OCCC, and that's where we were. Kathy is gonna bring, uh, coffee and cookies to the Western Pond Turtle Restoration Spring Workshop on March 9th from 10 to 12. Our guest speaker will be Susan Browns, Barnes, sorry, who is Regional Conservation Biologist of the West Region for the ODFNW, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And, uh, I think that'll be good. We're, we're gonna work on contacting other people that she suggested, but, uh, they may not. It's at O-L-C-C. OCCC. It's at the community college.
At 10, right?
At 10.
Okay.
Yeah. And there may, we may be up in the lab.
Yeah.
Josh is gonna check with her 'cause she's bringing live and dead turtles. I'm not sure how that works. Um, and there will be some demonstrations, and then we may visit the lake. So, yeah. So, Josh is taking care of that. Uh, we talked about SOS, uh, Water Quality Committee Goals, pretty much similar to the 2018 ones with the revegetation of the lake to achieve 20%. We didn't make that, but, um, and number two will be to assist with weekly water quality, uh, testing to detect E. coli bacteria and Habs levels when in bloom between Memorial Day and Labor Day. But Josh is planning to get a, an intern in just for enough time to do the water testing during that time. So, number three then becomes to assist Josh in, uh, working with the monthly monitoring, monitoring in the winter months using the XO water unit, uh, whatever he needs, whatever, if he needs a boat or something. Uh, number four would be the continuation of the Floating Garden Project. And there are some papers down there, uh, if you need them, uh, on how to build a water thing. And do we still have that Boy Scout, Tina? Boy Scout troop, maybe?
They showed interest in it, and I, I have a feeling that just during the winter months, but I will follow up with that.
Okay. And, and if you pick up one of those instructions?
I forwarded that whole...
Got it. Okay. Great. I wasn't sure I got you the right form of it.
Yeah. I will, um, I'll follow up with that right now.
Okay. And then, um, number five on our, our, the last one on our committee goals is to the Western Pond Turtle Project. And this would be just try to, trying to restore or create habitat depending upon what Susan Barnes tells us on March 9th, what we can do to re- restore the Western Pond Turtle in Devils Lake. She's, she's kind of interested in having another site for these because she didn't know we had them. We've had two sightings, so that'll be good. Um, let's see, what else can we do? Uh, we tried to elect officers, but only Kathy and I were there, so didn't get that done. So, we'll keep working on that.
You nominate the people that aren't there.
That's what we should've done. Any questions about the ESOS Water Quality Committee?
I will get back to you on my answer from the Boy Scouts.
Okay. Well, we have three floating gardens, one's yours...
Yeah.
...in the lake, and mine's just, I'm, I'm about to pull out the plants and put them over, you know, in one of the parks in the water area and start over because it's grown so much.
Mm-hmm.
That's just a year, so...
Wow.
They work.
So, our plants are taken off as well?
If you want to share some of your floating plants, mine's not planted yet.
Okay, but they're really attached to the bottom of...
Oh, to the bottom of the lake?
Yeah. No, no, in the, in the floating garden.
Oh, gotcha.
I could pull the whole basket out and probably plant it.
Gotcha.
You know, uh, plants are pretty resilient, though. I'm sure they'll transplant nicely.
I think they could rip it back. Okay.
Yeah, if they're, if you know, they're the successful ones.
Thank you. All right. Um, projects and operations, Josh?
All righty. Uh, the aeration system's been great. I've been giving it daily checks and going over there, keeping an eye on things. Haven't any issues with the compressor. We haven't had any more that I'm aware of, any issues or concerns about the noise level over there. Along those lines, Bill went over there and put a couple sheets. I think we may have discussed that briefly in the last board meeting. That seems to be doing fine. That all but completely eliminates the sound at that point. And discussing that with Bill, it may not be the worst idea, given the fact that it's low cost to keep debris and everything out of there. I wasn't really thinking about all the tree cover in that area as well, so...
Yeah, there was about a foot of leaves inside of that thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that may be an idea to stay with. But, um, I went out with Bill last week, too, uh, to run the XO probe, and we got a round of samples in the treatment and outside of the treatment area. Diffusers look good. How John described it to us was, you know, the lift of the water, how effective they are, and the diffusers we looked at look like they were doing a pretty good job, so, um, since they've been installed. But haven't had any issues with that. We're doing good. We did, um, any, any questions on that? All right.
How often are we supposed to pull up the diffusers and clean them?
I just got all those answers for you.
Oh.
I really just sent it out before I came to the meeting. John got me the manual.
Oh, okay.
And there's a great description of the maintenance and operations in there. It's gonna, it's, it's awesome.
Awesome.
I read it, and I'm like, this, now I know exactly what I need to do on schedule. So, I'll be getting up with Bill on that, too, especially for the in-water portion of check and everything, and seeing, you know, how we need to get that scheduled out on, you know, on interval, so we make sure and keep an eye on everything, keep it operating as well as it has been, so...
Okay.
The video monitoring project is almost complete, and I know this thing has been a long time going. Uh, the camera recently just froze up on us after we got it going, but we found out, um, it's most likely because there's a big panel in there at Vivian's in the back room where everything's connected, and one of the power adapters got unplugged with somebody moving something, we think, or any number of things. But Jimmy is getting some little clips that go on the outlet itself, so we can avoid any accidental, you know, pullouts of anything before, so one little...
Is one of the cameras working?
It, it was, and it froze up, and then we, we're resetting it currently, but it should be completely active. The internet and everything look like it worked fine. I know a couple of you got to see a little bit of that once we had it up, but, um, we should have that soon. The other camera's being replaced by Star Dot. They're sending us a new one under warranty, so...
I have a one, one question.
Sure.
On how do you adjust what it's looking at?
That is the difficult part with these cameras. You have to...
Solid mount or the screw?
It's, it's a solid mount. There are three or four little focus things. It is a manual FTP camera. Now, you could, there are really fancy ones that you can focus them and everything remotely, uh, like the one at Nell Scott Reef that Jim also installed, but that camera alone was $15,000.
What I'm talking about is our River Cam. It's, it looks more at the water.
Yeah, no, we're, we can do that, absolutely. Yeah, we can adjust the tilt and the pan. That is manual. Yeah. Yeah. But, um, we figured we'd put it up and kinda see, and exactly what you're telling me is what I need, so...
Are you looking at computer screen to see what the camera's looking at?
We do. Literally have to stand out there with a laptop, and Jimmy or I get up the ladder, and one of us does it, and then we wait for it to refresh, and then... But, um, we can definitely pull it out and zoom it a little bit, so, but we're, we're getting there on that project.
But you haven't pointed where you want it to point.
Yeah, yeah. It's covering the whole D River Bridge area, the whole outlet. It's really caught a lot while, you know, while it was functioning before we had the, um, the issue. I watched it and saw those logs move so much, even on those 15 or 30-second intervals that the cam shots were on, and I, I knew they moved, and I'd been out there and even stood and watched them, but I had no idea that they were that dynamic in that area as well. So, it was really neat to kinda see the actual movement of all the debris and everything down there coming in, so give us a, a little better actual picture of what's going on, maybe help us get some more solutions for that area. Any questions on the cameras? Uh, I think Bill already covered the Airstream Pro. Uh, we have a couple of locations on tap. It's really gained a lot of popularity, and it's been really effective in the spots that we've put it, so I think it's a great program to keep moving along with, and Bill's been doing an outstanding job through the, um, Special Projects Committee, getting that around and outreach to people as well, so... The, uh, one of the biggest things we're dealing with right now, of course, is the sediment and flooding issues we're having down at the D River, and it's something that's, uh, been thematic throughout the history of, of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District and really the entire area in Devils Lake and Lincoln City. That's been an issue, and it's been going back and forth. There's, there's always been sand coming in there. There's always been a lot of debris. A lot of this is coming from the ocean, from storm events and things like that, so they're, they're a one-time type event. It's not a natural occurrence or a natural ebb and flow. Uh, it's just that a lot of these events have stacked up over the years, uh, 'cause there hasn't been a really good solution to get rid of it. Um, and currently, uh, before, it, it didn't seem as problematic from what I've seen, from what I've seen in satellite images and, and other things. It was building up. I mean, it was kind of apparent that it was building up, but now, uh, in only the two years that I've been here managing the district, um, I've seen an astounding amount of sediment and soils go in there, and it's directly causing flooding issues, you know, especially around that First and Third Street canal area. That whole one canal is almost gone on the edge right now, where the, the sand has been creeping out all the way towards the ends of Vivian's dock. Um, along those lines, I had a meeting, uh, with Lila and Stephanie with Lincoln City last week. They're very interested as well. They understand the importance of that. They also recognize the fact that this has rapidly became more of a problem, even in the last couple of years. So, very interested in looking at some solutions and involvement moving forward in that program as well. Um, I've contacted the US Army Corps of Engineers, who did most of the study on it historically, and I'm still going through some of that documentation. Getting a lot of the same kind of information and story that we've gotten before is that they had a lot of staff then, they had a lot of money then, they don't have a lot of staff now, they don't have a lot of money. And we're talking to anyone who may be able to help us or enlighten us a little bit more on that, or any programs that the Corps may have, um, since ultimately this is a federal responsibility of being an actual flooding issue. Uh, and we've really seen it here. We've had to clear the lake twice this past month. Both definitely emergency situations where we were gaining a foot of water in a day or so, um, maybe over two days, but I, I definitely saw in a 24-hour period almost six inches come in in one period. And that was not during active rainfall. So, it's very important that we can get out there and we have the ability to do that, whether it's approaching the Corps for a larger project through some of this historical documentation research they've done, or whether it is, uh, some of the other solutions like we have tried before or discussed before, extending the emergency permit to the west side or doing a one-time removal there. But we're looking at any and all solutions we can have in the, in the near term, of course, and, and in the long term to try and maybe minimize this, so it doesn't become such a large problem historically again.
Josh, just in regards to that, um, who is it that, I mean, in your investigation and everything, and you apparently talked with the city, um, maybe you've talked with the Corps of Engineers?
Yes.
With, who's the person there? I can't remember.
Brad, I think is his name. They recently switched.
Brad Johnson?
I think it was Brad Johnson, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And, um, and then the state, I know that, but do we need to get, like, Congressman Schrader's office involved or some, somebody to come out and take a look? I, I just think if we, if we don't take the reins on this and have one of his staff or somebody out here to see what the problem is, then, you know, we aren't, we're, we're gonna be in the same situation next year. I don't, I don't want to be that. I hope we're not there. I hope that by next, by this fall, we can have some kind of solution in place, because, I mean, like you said, this is just getting worse and worse. And I know that, you know, the Corps of Engineers and City of Lincoln City and all, all of the state, they're all, you know, the key players, but I think we need to get a congressman involved, in all honesty.
Yeah.
If, if they're operating, if they're paying their staff, I don't know.
I don't think there's any, any issue at all with bringing that to their attention or have them come look at it and explain the problem. I mean, this is all public information we're discussing right now, so the more people know about it, the better.
Mm-hmm. I, I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, do you, do you perceive, um, you know, with your talks with the Corps of Engineers and the state and stuff putting forth a permit, or have you gotten any indication of what they need or where we're at on that?
We actually have not. They're not very forthcoming with information over the phone when you talk about permits and things like that. That puts them in a liability if they give you any indication that they would approve or not approve something, uh, later on down the line. So, they have not really given us any indication about that. They are fully aware of it. They've been even more aware this past year. I've been in, you know, I've sent emails, I've, I've talked when we set up meetings. They, they know that it's an issue. They know what's going on. They know that we're actively looking at it right now and working on it. Um, I will continue working with them to see, following their recommendations from the contacts that they're giving me, also within the Corps to follow up with, to see if there's any other resources or expertise, or maybe one of those people can lead us to something as well. But it, it's not a problem for me also to send an email to a congressman or, or senator, anyone.
So, Ken, sorry to interrupt, but just to clarify, so the last time we talked about this, it sounded like you were trying to make sure that we had as many, um, different entities involved in this for, to, to kind of gear up for success in, in applying for the permit.
And I still think that regardless of what the end is, that our stakeholders being involved is extremely important. Um, we're gonna need their voice.
So, I, I agree with that, too, but it, I think what I hear you saying is maybe we need to get a little more aggressive and, A, bring in, you know, another layer of stakeholder in, you know, a U.S. Congressman. Um, but then maybe, maybe start maybe more aggressively going after the permit and, and, you know, instead of just talking around the situation...
Thinking about what we're gonna do, yeah.
Kind of get that ball rolling.
So, give them the clear, I mean, is that, is that the direction the board wants to go, to just say, hey, let's extend this permit?
I think so. I think we need to take an aggressive approach.
Yeah, I agree.
If we don't, we're gonna be, we're gonna be right here next year.
I feel like you can talk about it for a lot of years.
Oh, we have, it appears.
Yeah. And so, so, you know, well, I would love to, you know, I, I kinda liked your idea of, you know, getting all the, the fringe stuff done, so when we do start that ball rolling, it continues to roll in the direction we want it to go. But I think in the light of what we've been through in the last two and a half or three weeks, and, you know, what we went through this fall, I'm wondering if, if it is this time to start the ball rolling and then just, you know, like we have with other permits of plugging the holes along the way and keeping it in the, in the chute.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, and we're, and that's not the, the only thing we're looking at either. I, I spoke with, uh, Nathan and James both here during the last couple of times they both went out and cleared the rivers, and, um, you know, they can get down in there, they can get excavators and stuff in there. We just need the regulatory clearance or approval or whatever we need to extend that permit, get that equipment in there. I think a dredge is, is kind of a expensive, not really appropriate idea for that particular area, but historically, they took it out with excavators. We have so many pictures. That's how that, that maintenance operation took place.
But it wasn't as big of job.
No, no, it wasn't. So, it'll be a bigger job this one time, but hopefully if we can get that or get some kind of caveat where we'll meet, even if it's a...
The same as the west side of the bridge.
This amount of sand is built up. Now, you can go clear it, kind of thing, you know, whatever we can get, as long as we can get in there and do something. And then we'll know to reserve the funding, we'll know what it costs to keep that maintenance operation open. But yeah, no, I can, I can certainly crank up the eat a little bit and involve some more people and some higher up, you know, other organizations in the government as well to see if, if maybe there are other resources or...
Well, I know, after, after the last meeting, I looked up, you know, the information on Schrader's office, 'cause I've been, I'd been in contact with them before, but I couldn't find a phone number or anything there, and so, they do have an office in Salem...
Okay.
...and staff there that I visited, um, but I, I didn't pick up on that. I, I just, I, 'cause I didn't know where we were on everything, but I really can see that here we've, you know, in December, we've had, two times we've had to unplug the river.
Yeah.
We have another king tide coming in about two weeks. Then in next month, we have another's, another, and the second time it was plugged, it was just because the, the ocean was so rough. And there wasn't a high tide at that, I mean, as high a tide as we can expect coming up the, and so, I can see us spending, doing this several other times this, this winter, and then I, I just don't want to be setting at the same place next year, if possible.
No. And this, and this may take, it may take what you're describing to have a little more fuel in the fire to get this, 'cause this, this could be a serious policy-type change. Even the current permit we're under is still kind of a square peg in a round hole situation. They're allowing us to work under it because they don't have a better option on form. Well, maybe it's time that they need to come up with a better option on form or, or something specific. We cannot be the only people who deal with something like this.
Right. And, and I mean, all, all the constituents that live around the lake and stuff and such, I mean, there's millions of dollars of property damage that's potentially involved if, if we don't...
Yeah, I have a duck sitting in my yard.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And along those lines, we're in contact with the county assessor, and I just got refreshed numbers on all the properties and tax values and market values on the east side of the lake, and they're getting me the ones for the Lincoln City west side of the lake as well. So, we'll have those to factor into our discussions and conversations we're talking about.
Good.
You know, property values and potential damage, because the, the area's gained a massive amount of value since any of this reporting was done, even in the early 90s. The, the dollar amount is, is beyond shocking, what it is now, what it was then.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
It's cool. Thanks, Josh.
Thanks.
And our water quality briefing. I briefly talked about that when I went out with Bill last week. Everything looked great. We didn't see a spot of algae again out there when we were out. The XO read out great. It's what we expect in the winter. Dissolved oxygen has returned on the bottom. Nothing strange came up. Temperatures are fine. So, good news there, so.
Did you see any, any major changes between December 17 to December 18?
No, they, it had already kinda changed over. Once that water temperature gets below, I can't remember the exact threshold, but it gets below a mark where that algae literally will not, can't proliferate. And that's typically where we see that linear downside of the water getting clear and the algae going away. Once again, you know, once, once we get into this summer, I am extremely excited to see, when I go out there in July, what those DOs are gonna read in that field.
I guess the other question I, I'd have with regard to that, Josh, is that, I mean, if we have, if, if really dissolved oxygen is temperature-dependent and we're in the winter months, is it appropriate for us to run the compressor and stuff through the winter months, or cut it back some, or, I don't know. I'm, I'm just...
Yeah, no, those are all options, and we've discussed those with John a few times, even pulsing it, even as we move farther along, you know, just what you're saying, putting it on a schedule, taking it up and down certain times. I think we wanted to leave it on initially for these first few months, just to make sure that we're good, you know, as far as the airlines and everything, no leaks and, and equipment-wise functioning. We can certainly look at that in the future, moving forward. It's really a discussion to have, you know, any questions you have that I can fill into that discussion, let me know.
Well, yeah, I, I agree. I'm just thinking as we look forward, I, have we gotten any costs back on what it costs to run that on a monthly basis? The, in those first, we've, we've had it running for what, two and a half months now, or two months? And do we have any cost for electricity?
Let me look at Pacific Power here. You know, I don't see it in here, actually. I do not believe that we have that yet. Yeah, I wish it was, but that's a good question. I'll look into it.
Okay. That'd be great. It would just be nice. We, we anticipated it was gonna be about 600 a month, about 20 bucks a day.
Yeah.
And I just wondered if it's come in about that?
Didn't we get a number like 725? Am I dreaming that?
We had a couple things here and there, but some of them had to do with the setup of the system, so that, that could've potentially been it. And I believe that is all I have, if there are no more questions.
Well, I would be kinda interested to see how, what the results are after one year of operation, because that's when it's scheduled maintenance is, and John will be back. So, upon him coming back, we'll have that year-long readout of what it's doing, what it's costing, and then if we still have the dissolved oxygen readings that we have had all year, or if they've gotten worse, we'll be able to look at that and adjust it and figure out if we really need to run it through the winter.
Right. I mean, if, if it's temperature-dependent, we may not have to, if, if it's appropriate to shut it down during that time.
But this may be one of the crucial times to run it, though, is if we got seawater coming in, and it's laying on the, heading for the deep part of the lake.
Sure.
Well, and the other thing too, is anytime you shut down something that moves all the time, when you turn it back on, what, what is ramifications?
John did mention that. When there's a startup or shutdown for an extended period of time, like a few days or a week or something, occasionally you'll have to back flush a line or, or something like that, but...
Yeah, we have had some power outages, and they didn't affect it at all.
They didn't. They didn't, thankfully. So, I think we were pretty, we were out for a short period.
Is the sea lion still in the lake?
Uh, one sighting, one sighting, and I, nothing. I have not heard anything else after that.
That's the only thing I heard, so.
Yeah. It's just one sighting, so. All right. New business, we need to appoint a budget officer for our budget cycle and putting together a budget for this, the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. And so, with that, I move that we appoint our, Josh, as our budget officer, and...
Come on, Ken, I didn't even get the year right.
2019, 2020, that's...
Oh!
That's too quick.
That's right. I, I did notice that. I wanna make sure that that's the case.
Killing me.
Do you need a second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Josh, you're our budget officer.
Every year.
Have, have you started on that yet, or?
I just started collecting some of the information with Teresa, and I'll get some meetings set up between Teresa and Steve and myself, and do what we did last year, so. Worked out pretty well.
Great, yeah. Very good. All right. Do we have any other new business from the board? Non-agenda items from the board? Additional comments from citizens present? All six of you, seven of you? Board comments? Boy, this is a fast board meeting tonight.
I talked as much as I could, Ken.
Well, thank you for coming. We plan on meeting the second Thursday of February, and that should be a longer meeting with regard to a good discussion about the board's involvement in moving forward after our, our report on the, the potential sewer-ing the east side of the lake, so it should be a lively discussion. So, thank you all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.
Amen.
Yeah, let me check the time.
Is it somewhat similar to the last time you came? It was just...
They're, they're televised right now, Miles.
Yeah, pretty much. It's not gonna be anything in-depth.
I'm trying harder to remember my lecture.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're televised.
Uh, Ken, yeah, pretty much the same stuff. We're just gonna see, bring him up to speed, you know, kinda talk committee and D O N A real quick, and get it worked out. Hey, Miles.
I'm ready. That, I will do. I wanna come see your new place, too. I've heard about it since I moved here.